All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here this afternoon for our work session, our April 21st, 2021 work session. Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order the work session. We have a few things on our agenda today. It's not really packed, which is a good thing sometimes. We have our school calendar topic and discussion.
So when we know our agenda, we are always, this entire year has been a moving target, as you all know, with the different board meetings, different res- get, just trying to keep things going. So as far as our school calendar, we really hope to bring to the board and to the public our school start date. However, there are, there are pending bills that look like they will likely be passed, but we're not sure yet. Right now, we would have to start on August 23rd. So our start date will be August 23rd or August 16th. There is, we do believe, after some conversations with legislators, that it will look like the 16th, we most likely, but that is not official yet, but it will be one of those two start dates.
That's for the students?
For students, so staff would be a week prior.
Okay.
Are there competing bills?
What we have going on is there are multiple bills for specific school districts.
Yeah.
And so there's traction now to say, we need to stop doing for single school district support and move it to statewide. There is significant opposition from the tourism industry for that week, which has been driving the school calendar for the better part of the last two decades. So that's, that's what's holding things up. And so hopefully, rather than random districts being assigned, that opportunity, they're going to allow the entire state that opportunity.
Yeah. So that, you know, it used to be the only way you could apply for a waiver was weather-related reasons. So the mountain regions, those that miss lots of school because of the snow. But now, as Dr. Luke said, we've got a lot of individuals LEAs either teaming up in a small group or going at it by themselves to apply for calendar flexibility. So in our meeting the other day, there were almost 30 bills introduced just for calendar flexibility. One of which, though, was about statewide calendar flexibility. So we're hoping that that moves forward.
Well, of course, we won't have the direct results this year, but the fact that they were able to do it this year and do their tests before the end of the school, I mean, before we went home for Christmas is, is just, you know, that's speaks volumes about it.
We all know, we heard from our student board as well, that's the preferred. It's the natural and the preferred, but if we have to start the 23rd, we cannot, it is not really feasible to end before Christmas and provide the same number. The hours and the days are too far off to do that. So we're really hoping that the 16th.
Are those five virtual days going to have to be built in again?
Right.
I mean, we're pretty much, think we know how to do virtual.
Right now, yes.
But they will still be built?
We've put them in as placeholders and we're, we're prepared to move forward with that.
Like I said before, ending before Christmas, this semester before Christmas is the most educationally sound.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's why we're here, not for tourism.
And I do mean to correct you, but you spend the last four decades, not two.
That, that does give them a real break because they don't have to work on projects or study for exams and.
And then they start fresh.
And hopefully, teachers are done with grading everything. But I do see where, you know, businesses need to pay ways and they contribute tax dollars to our schools, so.
Do we have a paper copy of their proposed calendars?
They were, they were in your last packets, I believe.
Last time.
Yes, they were in your last packets. We gave this and this.
We apologize for having a break, but we didn't, so it's one of the 16th and the 23rd. There's no reason to vote until we.
Are we, what do we have in there in the way of, are we still doing early release Fridays for the high schools?
We built in, is, we had, we, so we had built in early release days across the district. Common early release, common schedule, a reduction in the high school early release days.
So you haven't changed anything from what we talked about last time?
No.
Okay.
No. But it, but a common calendar district one, which we have not had a common calendar.
With NAP in the high school?
With the exception of NAP.
Okay.
Because they are automatically starting a week, they're already on a different calendar, a different, different set. So, but we'll match up as much as we can. If we get that flexibility to move the six, we'll try to mirror as much as we can with the dates.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Dr. Luke. This is your 2021-22 draft budget.
Budget. So here we have the 21-22 draft budget resolution. You have the document hopefully in front of you. And throughout this document, you'll see areas that are highlighted in yellow or gold, whatever color that is. And this is where you, as a board, is, will find your function or your purpose code portion of the budget. And that is the portion that you need to make your appropriation decisions. Just as a refresher, I want to go over the definitions of those purpose codes or functions. Instructional services is the cost of activities dealing directly with the interaction between teachers and students. This includes all teacher and school administration payroll and benefits, athletics, the arts, clubs, staff development, student accounting, health services, and that's just to name a few. System-wide support services is the cost of activities that provide system-wide support for school-based programs. This includes directors, technology and office personnel, insurance payments, IT purchases, utilities, maintenance, trans, maintenance and transportation, and that's just a few of those also. Ancillary services are costs that are not directly related to the education of students, and those are your school nutrition expenses. Non-programmed charges are outgoing payments to other government units, and that includes our charter school payments and our out-of-district tuition payments that we make. The other piece of budget that's important to you as a board is to make, to help you make your decisions, is revenue. And I'll be showing you the major sources of revenue as we go along through the document. Okay. Let's look at section one, page one. So section one is the state public school fund or Fund One. I'm projecting total state public school fund appropriation of $27,970,587. Approximately 85% of that course is instructional services. Approximately 15% of that is going to system-wide support services, and less than 1% is budgeted for ancillary services. Section two is showing you the PRCs or the buckets of revenue. So you'll see each PRC that I've had either a formula for or an actual allotment for. I've not gotten a lot from the state right now, but this is my projection of what we will be getting, at least at the beginning of the year.
Is this a higher projection than what we got last year?
It is, just a little bit. I had a few more formulas this year than I had last year, this time, for state money.
Can I have a question up? If we have an influx of students, is it 1% or 2% over last year's?
It's 2% or 100. So whichever is lower. So that's, right now, we're.
And the state will give us more funding?
They'll give us more funding, or they can take away, too. So I don't think that'll be an issue, so I think we'll.
But is that still like 10 days or is there a date?
Best one out of two. So usually by October, we have that, that number, and then we'll know if we did it or.
Right now, they're projecting us to lose, a reduction of 112 students.
112 students, yeah.
So right now, they have, they have actually reduced by 112 our projected ATM count from last year. I'm confident, I usually said that we will make up that 100 students rather quickly and receive those funds. But I, right now, we're going to start at a deficit as opposed to last year because we actually did have, so we, and I'm using this, about 15% reduction in our kindergarten class as a whole. I think we're missing somewhere between 45 and 60 students across the district in kindergarten. It's parents that chose to just not enroll their child this year, but will next year because they were close in age or they could wait another year and so on. And then we also had students that attended private schools this year since we did not open to start the year, and we have some parents who chose to go homeschool with their kids, period. And so Sandy Reynolds tracked all that information. I think we shared that in an earlier board meeting. I project, you know, if probably somewhere between 50 and 75% of just those students return, along with the growth that we have in the subdivisions, that we should hit that 100, but we won't see those revenues until after October with the new student headcount.
And I'll come to those, I'll give you those with a budget amendment.
Right now, both, and I think this is relevant to this budget part from the state, right now, both Mayock and Charleroy over 600 students, that's never occurred. And I think Mayock's short about 40 students, Charleroy's a little bit closer, they're probably short 20, 25. And so the, the students are, I think they're, they're going to be there, but again, as Larissa said, these are projected at this point, but it's, we are, we are going to get our budget over to the commissioners in May.
They both have 600 or 10,000?
What, Charleroy's at 611 and Mayock's at 610.
Well, one thing that could impact our number of students, I understand there's legislation out there to give charter and private schools more money?
More money.
Yes.
Have you heard any, is there any update on that?
Just that there's legislation. I haven't heard that the, there's, that that would get passed the governor. I, I would be surprised if it got passed the governor, but that legislation tends to get, it does get introduced, they're chipping away at the public school funds, the traditional public school funding for, as you know.
And the charter schools didn't miss a beat. I mean, you know, we've got some large school systems in the state that had just gone back in April, so that did not help public education.
Private as well, I mean, the private one's eight, I've worked with people and their kids, been back since, they never, they never moved.
Let's turn to section three. Section three is our local current expense fund, Fund Two section, and I'm projecting that our local current expense fund appropriation will be $12,962,591. And 56% of that will be appropriated to instructional services, 44% of that will be appropriate to system-wide support services, and then less than 1% will go into ancillary services and less than 1% will go to non-programmed services. And then in the box, the big box, you'll see once again where we budget that 12, almost $13 million in each PRC. You can see the amounts that are being budgeted there.
Do we have any new line items here?
We don't have new line items, but I will be making new budget codes for this next budget. Those budget codes will go into OO1 classroom teachers, OO7 instructional support, and O27 teachers assistance. So you won't see another, a new PRC for those, but we will have budget code, new budget code line items for the new funding, so we can track it.
So the charter school, that comes out of our, our local?
Yes, charter schools are paid out of, so the way that I pay the charter schools is I, I do, I have a formula, and I use our monthly payment from the county, and I use our fines and forfeitures payments from the counties to figure when the per pupil payment will be. And so when the fines and forfeitures fluctuates, the payments to the charter schools fluctuate also.
Speaking of which, where's that state lawsuit that was?
I don't know. I haven't heard anything about that.
Fines and forfeitures, you know, that we were supposed to get more money coming back to the local district?
We did get, we did get like a check for 500 some dollars from some, I don't know what it was, it wasn't that though, but it was some, I don't know, 20-year-old, 10-year-old lawsuit, and none, all the, all the finance officers were like, that's hard, that's hard. And I'm like, I don't care, just give it to me. It's mine. It's money.
Larissa, the coaching stipends, is that what we paid last year pretty much, or is that an increase?
No, it's what we, it's, so that fluctuates a little bit based on a coach's experience, but it doesn't fluctuate very much from year to year. Okay. All right, section four is, I'm letting you know where that revenue's coming from and I'm budgeting those appropriations for. So we're looking at $12,700,591 from the county appropriation. I'm budgeting $250,000 for fines and forfeitures. That's down from $300,000 last year. I don't think we're going to hit $300,000 this year, but we're kind of close, but COVID kind of put dent in that, so I'm just going to budget a little lower and hope for, for the higher next year. And interest, I'm budgeting around $12,000 for that. Okay?
Go over the funds and forfeitures if you will, Larissa.
Yep.
About what that includes.
Um, I know some of it is from speeding tickets. I know that some of it comes from if, if you skip bail, we get your money, your bail money. I don't know what else is in that, but I'm, I'm not.
I think maybe if I'm mistaken, I believe something with the bus, uh, bus infractions.
It's not, it's a lot of, most of it is tickets.
Bus infractions.
Another reason for any better schools opening.
I can, I can find out, I can ask that question.
Well, a lot of people ignore it and it doesn't seem to make a difference.
Oh, they get it.
But they do get it, okay. Your ears.
Oh, they get it, you go through the stock, there's a camera, it catches it, and then they get followed up with that is, that is a hefty fine.
This is dispersed from the clerk of courts office.
Yes. I think we've heard Kevin make that joke several times.
Yeah. He's doing his part.
Okay, section five. This is our federal grants fund, Fund Three. So I had, I have no planning allotments right now, none from federal. The only thing I have to put in the section is Donovan Rogan gave me a figure of $45,775 for his CTE federal grant, and I'm guessing that we're going to have $58,045 to carry over from our CARES Act, PRC 163 money. That's all I have to put in that budget at this point, so you'll definitely see some money coming into that fund, Fund Three. Last year, I had a planning allotment of 1.6, and so I think we'll probably see around that again this year. And then we have S R two money coming in, I'm not sure if that's going to be in this year or next year, but that, we're looking at $1,008,000 coming in for that. And then we've got some S R three money coming in, probably most likely next year, or maybe even later, $4 million for that. So we will be seeing some pretty hefty budget amendments from me in the federal Fund Three area. Yeah.
We're also getting our, the rules and how we can spend that money and what that looks like. I've spoken with all of you already regarding some of that, and then the, it doesn't take 24 hours and you get more information, it says you can spend it here, you can spend it there. We're going to make sure we have, we're going to use our, we're going to make sure we leverage our federal and state dollars as far as we can and make sure that we use these local dollars wisely. We're also going to make sure that we stay within those guidelines and their parameters that they set forth and, and use this money as best as we absolutely can. The level of frustration sometimes regarding clarity around these, how you can spend the funds or when you can spend them, and I'll give an example under the care, the initial CARES Act funding. We got together, we scrambled to allocate the funds and line things up, and got everything in, and I, and we spent several hours doing that at high level, and the next day, they said, you know what, you don't have to do that, you can put them all in one pot and we're going to roll it forward. They literally, they said you can roll it forward. That, that $58,000 has been spent at least three times already, that, that is rolling over because we were initially told it had to be spent out by December 30th of 2020. So we're, we're working through that, look for a much richer robust updating in, in the May agenda, and we'll, we'll go through that. We should have much, we have to have a budget in by the 7th, and with some grace with that, but by the 7th is what it's due.
So you actually might see a budget amendment this year for the S R two funding. That's why I didn't want to put it in the draft. Okay, section seven is your capital outlay fund, Fund Four, and you guys have voted on that at $1,805,000. Less than 1% is going into instructional services, that's not what capital outlays use for. So there's, there's probably any money that's being appropriated out of capital outlaying for instructional services. The bulk of it, 90% of it is in system-wide support services, and less than 1% is in ancillary services. And then the box below is the allocations by location for the information.
I want to point out in those allocations that you'll see that MES, Mayock Elementary along with Mayock Middle School have fairly small appropriations, that's because of the expansion projects, they're going to do their, their updates, their repairs, you'll see that dollar is going to flow through our, the outstanding projects that we have worked on. So that's why you, normally, Mayock Elementary with its age, we see a much higher dollar figure, that's why it's not larger this time.
Jargisburg and Charleroy, I have tiny.
They're new schools, I was just going to mention that. They're relatively new schools.
They're in great shape, they're new, and we're fortunate that we walked through, they're in pretty good shape for the time being. They have flat roofs, though.
Okay, turn the page. Section eight is the revenue that using to appropriate, and $405,000 will be coming from state lottery fund, and $1,400,000 will be coming for county appropriation.
I do want to point out as our school building projects move forward, that some of the lottery funds that we have used in a mass for large projects such as roofs and so on, will end up being reallocated to, to reduce our debt on buildings and to build new schools. So that's something that, that won't occur immediately, but that will occur sometime over the next couple of years, and so Matt's aware of that, his planning purposes in terms of what needs to get done, so does Larissa.
Okay. Section nine is our school nutrition fund, Fund Five, and I'm projecting total school nutrition fund appropriation of $1,620,562. 91% of that is ancillary services and 9% is non-programmed services. In section 10, there you can see the revenue that we are projecting and where it's coming Section 11 is our other local fund, Fund Eight. I'm projecting $960,907 to be appropriated. 83% of that will be appropriated into instructional services and 17% is going towards system-wide support services. Section 12 is showing you the revenues, where that's coming from. We've got some revenues from state sources, federal sources, local sources, and fund balance appropriated is, just means caregiver, that's the grants that are carried over every, every year.
But that is not appropriated.
It's not our fund balance.
That is not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about that.
Questionable thing.
Total operating budget for all funds is $45,424,267. So in conclusion, I just wanted to point out a few quick things to you. 73% of this entire budget is appropriated to instructional services, and that makes sense because our core business is educating our children, so that's a, that's a, something I did want to point out, too. And you have, most of the others, 26% of it, is to system-wide support services, which supports the education of our children. Almost 80% of this entire budget is payroll and benefits. So we're supporting our, 80% of our budget is supporting our, our employees. And then once again, I did want to point out that I did not appropriate any local fund balance to this budget, to balance it. So hopefully, we'll be adding, we will be adding to the fund balance this year, the end of the year, and that's my plan for next year.
Larissa, are we at a breaking point with school nutrition because I know it was real close.
Last year, we were. This year, we're not there yet, but.
Well, this year, we provided free meals to a lot of students. You didn't have to qualify, correct?
It's back here from the front row.
That's federal, but it is federal, yeah. But we, but whatever, we, but local has to pay for whatever, whatever it is, so we're on local.
Your food services, so that's again, that's your fully cost?
Yes.
Hourly and so on, so you have to have enough revenue to offset the salary and benefits. Larissa mentioned the 80%, that is standard operating practice for school districts. Eight, 78 to 82% of your budget goes to salary and benefits, that is, that's not unique to curate our schools, that is standard practice across the nation.
I think it's important to note, too, we just received word that meal service for next school year will also be free for all students.
But without this, and that's a great thing.
Summer as well.
But didn't, it seems to me that something was discussed about the fact that it was still costing us, unless we, that's why we needed to get people to sign up for the free or reduce because then it didn't cost us, is that?
So Ms. Rodriguez is much more literate on this and I know just enough to be dangerous.
I remember her talking about.
But you have to understand that there are reimbursable meals, right? So for every student who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, there's a reimbursable meal rate that we receive for those meals. And so during this COVID year where we started virtually, we did not have a lot of families fill out free and reduced lunch forms because we weren't in school. We, we weren't passing out the forms in little folders, sending them with our kindergarten and through fifth grade students, so for a variety of reasons, and then COVID and unemployment hit, and it, and it becomes perhaps a sticky issue for some families. So even right now, we're encouraging families who, who think they may qualify for free and reduced lunch to complete the forms, even though it's literally almost May, we still can submit for reimbursable status.
I think somehow we need to educate our parents that, yes, those lunches are free and, and you know, your, your child's going to get it, but if you qualify, it's going to help the county, you know, our budget situation. I think there needs to be some education somehow about that, something that lets them.
Angela asked that I mention it tonight or in my superintendent remarks, if someone wants to pick that up, I, I have a number, I didn't want it to get lost in my other remarks.
Well, and it might need to be next, next month, you know?
But it can't happen too soon. It's, the free and reduced forms and claims across the state and nation are down, like, not even down, they're half. So if you had 40% before, only 20% filled it out.
Because they're automatically giving it.
Exactly.
So why go format?
And that's probably what they're thinking. But here's, even if we did like an all call and said in order for, for the, for us to get reimbursed, we need you to fill out that.
If you qual, if you qualify or think you qualify.
She's doing direct mailing, Angela's doing direct mailing to families that she knows that have qualified and have filled out forms in the past, so she's making that effort. So we can't say it enough.
And I think.
Some sort of incentive to the students when they bring it back?
Well, you know, here's what they tell you. While, while we think that it benefits us for the reimbursable side, if you remember this year now, the federal government's providing P E B T payments to families during COVID shutdowns for students at home because of virtual learning. Because they said there are too many kids at home, we don't know if they're getting meals from schools. So families that fill out the free and reduced lunch application and qualify ties directly into the system in which those families then receive federal money coming into their P E B T cards.
I think Angela needs to speak about that.
That's huge. And she's doing a great job with her social media pages, she's put all of that information out there, her website is up to date. But again, it goes back to, I'm already getting something, so maybe there's not that necessity or that urgency to have to complete those forms.
Yeah, they don't think that they need to.
And I didn't realize it was linked either because I'm sure like you, we filled it out this year, you know, at the beginning, or at some point, I'm sure. You know, at the beginning or at some point I'm sure I did. But I, I myself as a parent didn't know that it was linked back to that as well.
That, I mean, that's, that's huge because right now families are receiving P E B T benefits to their debit cards. However, that receives out based on school status, whether we're virtual, face to face, based on their kids and all that stuff. So I mean, they're filling out and completing that form does also matter for the family, not just for the school system's bottom dollar, but for that family as well.
Yeah.
Does it make a difference if they're virtual or in person?
It does. So in-person students who have access to the free meals in the building do not then get the same amount of funding behind the scenes as what a kid who's completely virtual does.
Well, we need them in some sort to get those forms back.
See what we can do. See what we can do. Angela might have some words to.
Yeah, yeah.
Free, free sets.
Sugar. It's crap, reset.
I'd probably bring it back.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. York. Any other discussion?
Now we're voting on this tonight.
Tonight.
No, we're not voting.
It's on.
This is the first read.
First read.
This is the draft.
So the second will be at the, the May board meeting. It's actually going to happen after the commissioners meeting. And I'll make sure that we communicate that we'll have it over to them as soon as it's approved.
I thought we had to have it till Monday fifteen.
May fifteen. But because we switched our board meeting, I can't.
I, I'd really like them to get it on time because I'd really like to not have to hear.
If there's any problems, I'll make sure everyone here is aware. It's really, I, I think they appreciate the timeliness as well, but there's also, we would have had that. If there's any problem or any pushback or there's anything, I'll make sure that we'll have to call a special meeting. And we'll have our meeting and we'll get it to them beforehand.
Sounds good. All right, summer school update.
So we thought that, we thought that we would have our parameter, we would know how summer school's going to look. We did not get our guideline to not drop in until Monday night. And so I'm going to have Renee kind of walk through some of what we were required to do. I'm going to touch on some, we are required to do summer reading camp. That has not gone away, but yet it was not confirmed that we would absolutely do summer reading camp until the last couple of weeks because it's, we're being asked to run a K-12 program, a, a K-five program, a middle school program, and a high school program. All at the same time. And also summer reading camp, which has very restrictive guidelines to it, which requires seventy-two hour reading instruction, but we're also required to do thirty days of summer school. So yeah, different roles, different things. So we've looked at the language and it says a hundred and fifty hours or thirty days. So we're going to, we're going to go with the or part because thirty days doesn't define how long the days are. We also did not get any differentiation in terms of LEAs, in terms of the school districts for districts like ours who have had our kids in the school at the elementary level since October and others have just returned in April. And so we're all told to go back and offer summer school. And there's no sliding scale. We're all required to do the exact same thing. However, that or language, we are going to stretch.
Sure. So late Monday night, the state board of education approved the final draft documents or guidance documents for what was House Bill eighty-two, now session law twenty-twenty-one dash seven, which requires all school districts, as Dr. Lou said, across the state, whether you've been in person or remote all of this time to offer a summer learning extension program. That is offered K-12. It is broken down however in legislation by K two, K elementary, K-five, six-eight, and nine-twelve. And each session has some different parameters required for each of those age brackets of students. Again, as he said, it can be at the LEA's discretion of a hundred and fifty hours, program hours, or thirty days. But that hundred and fifty hours or thirty days is per student. So I can't say we'll break up first session, summer school, and these kids can come. And then we'll do a second session for these kids in the later part of summer school and these kids can come. It has to be comprehensive of a hundred and fifty hours or thirty days for every student involved in the program. So as we processed through that initial response to the legislation, we started crunching numbers and looking. And like every other LEA across the state, the big concern is can we get teachers to work summer school? And that was, you know, the resounding opposition, if you will, to the initial rollout of this legislation. Our teachers have worked hard this year, harder than any other year because of all that they've been through with COVID. And so everybody's sitting there thinking, how are we going to get folks who just burned themselves out all year to commit to going six more weeks or a hundred and fifty hours or thirty more days into the summer? So as we sit and crunch numbers, we really looked at those two options and feel like thirty days is, is the best option for us moving forward.
Which is six weeks. It's their summer vacation.
It is. However, it does allow us the flexibility of timing to do half days. It also allows us not to do Fridays because one, as you spoke about tourism earlier, putting buses on the road on Fridays in the summer is a little scary. Not Mondays by themselves might even be a little daunting. So as we look through these things, we have started drafting a plan in which we can pay teachers for a full day, have students a half a day, allow them to plan, prepare for small group instruction the next days for summer school. Fridays off for both families and for teachers. We are trying creatively to think of how to incentivize. The other key point of this legislation is really about the incentivization of teachers being willing to come back and, and work summer school. So the legislation does require that we pay bonuses for any third grade teacher who, or any teacher, excuse me, K through eight who qualify for the state bonuses in reading and math instruction. They automatically receive a twelve hundred dollar bonus right off the bat if they agree to do summer school.
Because of their previous performance.
Because of their previous performance, any year, not just last year because we didn't test the year before that. Or any, any teacher who works in our district who has before received one of those bonuses is eligible if they do summer school this year to get twelve hundred dollar signing bonuses right off the bat. Third grade teachers who move kids in the reading recovery program, R T A, Read to Achieve legislation. Third grade teachers who move a kid from not being proficient on the third grade end of course tests in reading to proficient by the end of summer extension learning program, qualify for a hundred and fifty dollars per student as well. So they're putting incentives out at the state level as part of the requirements for this legislation. And then they've encouraged LEAs to go and be above and beyond that because they know in writing this legislation, we're all going to face the same challenge. So we early on requested from our teachers to get an idea. It was hard hitting the send button. Who wants to do summer school? If we do summer school, who would be interested? Really and truthfully, our K-five and our nine-twelve had the most responses. Of faculty who were willing to come back and run. Middle school was less, not nonexistent, there were not anybody in there. But more wanted to know what's going to be the details before I say yes to this. So we have a good pool of candidates who've said they are interested. Once we, I think, finalize these details and resubmit out to our staff and say, okay, guys, this is what it's going to look like. Are you interested? Then we'll have a better feel of who's going to sign up and run. Our principals and assistant principals, as well as teachers right now, are collecting all of our at-risk kids who would qualify for summer learning. We are required to target our at-risk students. Those students that we know were in danger of not meeting grade level expectations this school year for whatever reason, because they were virtual and didn't engage, because they were in school and still were just behind. They are collecting all that data. Of course, those numbers will drive moving forward how many staff we're going to need to complete summer school. And of course, there's no extra funding as, as we come to expect. Because we are receiving such large amounts of funding in these S R grants, there's no worries for us funding summer program or summer learning because of the amount of money coming out of these two S R, two and three grants that were, or programs that we're receiving. So we will, without a shadow of a doubt, be able to fund summer learning and probably incentivize for our staff working, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, teachers, whomever's going to be part of this program. Principals who are facilitating, you know, having to be in the buildings doing discipline perhaps during summer school when they like a break too. So that's where we are right now. We're going to continue to work on our draft plan, present it to our staff. I don't think it's anything that any of us said this is going to be awesome because everybody's so tired. But we know it's needed and we're excited to be able to offer some program for our students so that we can try to catch up some students that we know need this and be able to offer some enrichment activities as well. You'll read through the legislation, don't want to bore you, but we're required to offer lunch and breakfast and a snack. We are required to offer enrichment opportunities for students at least once a week. Physical activity daily for all of our students. And then it's English, math, and science instruction, science only for grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. And then at our high school level, it's about offering credit recovery for students who did not meet credit requirements to get the credit for the course. E O C instruction in person for any kid that failed an E O C course. And then at least one in-person elective is required to be offered at the high school level. Any of our choosing, doesn't matter. Above and beyond that, if we have students after space has already met with our at-risk kids that we want to offer some acceleration programs or enrichment programs, that will be by invitation as space prohibits, or permits us to be able to do.
Now, is this going to be required for certain students?
It is not required. We cannot make it mandatory based on the legislation. We are only required to offer it to students.
And what kind of, I mean, in the past, we've, we've done specific schools. Are we looking at central location? Are we going to do?
All schools.
All schools.
We're going to look at our numbers and then make a determination by, by building. Because our, we do have the funds to provide a busing for an individual building. We're going to try to make this is, whatever makes the most sense, we're going to do that. So if it means opening up three or four different sites rather than two like we've run for reading camps in the past. But the reading camp component of this adds just another flying ointment. It, it just adds up another, because that is a well-run operation. It's an intense program they go through. So that one may be run at centralized locations because of the way that entire operation. It operates completely separately than a traditional summer school program. There is one caveat here as well, and that is that if you are a kindergarten student and attends, you cannot be retained. It speaks just to kindergarten.
But there's no attendance requirement with that either, which is a little disconcerting. So as to, you know, is it required, Dr. Domi? I think that that might be the only place in which we have, LEAs can make a determination about attendance, especially for promotion. The last thing you want is a kindergartner to attend two out of thirty days and think, I get to get promoted because I did this. And that's not really the intent of the legislation. So I think perhaps that's something we have to consider moving forward. And it's much more flexible for high school students because the legislators and state board, you know, recognize that students have jobs. So theirs is more of a float in, float out type of understanding for high school students. I'm just coming to recoup my one biology credit. So I don't need to be there all day. I just need to come and get that one bit of instruction with that teacher and then I can go on and leave kind of thing. Whereas everybody else, it's very much a half a day schedule, reading, math, and science instruction.
And we're not going to talk about that in the board meeting tonight.
Are, are the K-three students still being held accountable for reaching certain reading levels this year?
So there was never, yes, there are reading benchmarks that students are supposed to hit according to their levels. But we are not retaining students because they don't meet a level L at the end of third grade this year. And I'm making that up. It might not be L.
Right.
At the end of this year because of all that we've been through. Would we, would they be invited because they're behind grade level expectations for summer enrichment and summer learning? Absolutely.
So the state and we're not, are we, we're not doing state E O Gs or we are?
We are.
We're required to give the state E O Gs, but they're going to hold, hold us for the accountability part of this. They're going to hold the schools harmless, but we must give the test, which I'm okay with giving. We did a lot this year and so actually that's a nice measurement for us to super rat. I'm actually encouraged by some of the data that I, that I've seen. And so we're not seeing the, the loss with that third grade, the current third grade group in terms of that reading component. I'm concerned with these, our, this year's second graders who ended the year in March last year's first graders and then had a mixed year. So we're really going to have to work hard with that third grade group next year to bring up those, those pockets of students that almost are there at their reading peaks, but they're not quite there yet.
And the high school students that are not, have not participated virtually, so the state has not turned to work in and they're failing, then they just have to make it up.
That is correct. So they would be offered the opportunity to attend summer learning for the purpose of credit recovery. And that credit recovery can be offered with teacher support. So they can come in and receive teacher support for credit recovery. In the past, we've also allowed them to do it totally online where, where they just could stay at home and do the credit recovery call if they needed assistance. We will have staff on site as part of this legislation to also support them in person, getting those credits recovered.
The girl needs an in-person.
I would strongly encourage it. Yeah.
And you said these students are going to be invited by teachers, by their instructors?
They'll receive letters in the mail as well as personal phone call follow-ups as part of our plan, identifying them as at risk for not meeting grade level standards, which many of them already know. I mean, we've still sent out notices to families that of concern about not meeting grade level expectations at elementary, middle school, high school. Obviously it's different because it's by credit. So all, they've been informed along the way, but they'll receive a formal invitation telling them that they qualify for summer learning and that this is the information and that we are strongly encouraging them. We cannot force them to come because it is in person and some are still virtual.
So it would be important to educate the parents when they receive these letters. It's, it's a great opportunity for their kids to, to take advantage of it, basically.
Absolutely.
We've also done, one of the, one of the positive aspects of COVID and having to offer on virtual along with in-person is that we've been able to really, and we had talked about this in board meetings before, around those at-risk students and trying to bring them back into the building and reaching out and trying to get kids back in. So we've done a nice job identifying who the kids are and we've done what we can to bring them back. The K-five has been on that. And we've done it at the six-eight and at the high school level as well. But unfortunately, when you have to offer two things and you can't hold, we can't force a student to come into the building and we know they would, if you're not doing well online, you need to be in the building. So it's disproportionate at, at the secondary level.
And I did, speaking of the kids being online or at, or in classroom, I did see where you were able to bring some kids back.
Yes. We, we've been able to bring back all of our at, any at-risk kid that we could bring back. We, we were able to bring back and we've been able to accommodate the majority of requests to return to in-person learning.
And provide transportation.
And, and provide transportation, which continues to be just a conundrum for us. So it's a, we've talked about transportation a tremendous amount through this entire process. And looking back, there were decisions made more than a decade ago in terms of transportation reduction and busing. And, and we're really ironically feeling those effects right now.
Sharing the buses between elementary and middle.
Sharing the buses, having different start times, not enough buses. And while they may have, and again, it, that's water under the bridge. It's passed. But now with our increased student population combined with restricted buttons, we're really feeling that pinch. Phil is looking into adding more buses next year. We, we actually need more buses. We're already projecting that out. Hopefully we're going to find drivers to go with the buses if we need buses.
That always helps.
And that's probably more buses just to continue with the plan we're using now.
That is correct.
That's not even to separate the buses at the schools.
Yes. Which, and again, this is our work session, so it's a little more casual to have some, some conversation. We, I think part of the reason we struggle with our drivers as well, I would love to go back and draw our drivers aside in the building. Because then you have that connection with that building, with the kid, wherever you're at and so on and so forth. And I understand when you have a financial crisis, you have to make reductions.
That's what I was just thinking. That's the reason that that happened.
Yeah.
Years ago, they'll, with, with the efficiency rating with our buses and, and sharing the routes and the drivers and we, we focused on that efficiency model. That's, that's the reason that that happened.
I think it happened even before you were on the board. I think it happened when everything was cut by the county, by the state.
It was private.
It was under Reagan.
Yeah. Well, that was two thousand.
And no fault, and again, and not, not even criticizing the decision at the time because you had.
You have, you do what you have to.
You have to do what you have to.
Absolutely. To a. Absolutely, to avoid cutting stock.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, and that was the lesser of two evils.
Yes. So it was built to sound logic, but as we've grown.
We don't have to.
We don't have, we've maxed everything out, seventy-two kids on a bus and so on.
It was so bad years ago that high school students drive buses.
I remember that. When I was in school, we had high school students driving and I don't remember any accidents. I think they were good.
Quite as much traffic.
Four ditch drivers making. There you go. We can start recruiting.
We gotta see if Tesla makes, uh, buses.
The automated drivers.
That's maybe not true. Uh, anything, have we heard anything about legislature or about the bus efficiency rating? I know they were talking about it.
They were talking about, have not followed up with it yet.
Uh, okay. I have not seen anything and I've been reading that.
But it's on the radar.
Also looking at possibly, we might get some money for a school if that budget goes through.
That would be phenomenal. That would be great. That would be great.
All right. Any other discussion? Any questions or any questions from our student board members?
Um, I did have a question. So obviously like the graduation plans came out however many weeks ago. And so just like the general consensus obviously is, you know, everyone wants more than four tickets. And that's just how it is, you know, split families, you have a lot of people, everyone wants more than four tickets to go to graduation. So I just know like a lot of parents and students are like listening to the meeting tonight, kind, like listening to Ms., who takes care of it?
Erin.
Erin, yeah. Just because of the problem that's happening, obviously there's gonna be students there, all the schools back in. So just some kind of reasoning behind why there's only four is going to be something that's looked for tonight.
The governor, he's limiting air numbers, correct?
Capacity restrictions still exist for outdoor and indoor venues. And so we are still required to, to work within those capacity restrictions.
And also there was a question. So what if there's that certain number of seniors that don't use all of their tickets? So is that gonna be something that the individual student can kind of say like, hey, I have extra tickets, you can take them? Or is that gonna be something that's handled here?
So that's always been the way it's worked, Taylor, at high school. So if I'm a graduate and I decide I'm not walking, but I picked up my tickets, I hand them to whoever I wanna hand them to.
Or sell.
That is not.
They've probably been solving that.
Um, I don't think logistically it's something that the school can tackle because I can't say, okay, I've got these four tickets. Who's our grads?
Yeah.
Everybody runs in.
Just say, that needs to be, yeah.
Well, these are just questions I've gotten in the past, like the past three days.
And Taylor, I know four is not enough, but last year they were only given two.
Yeah. Well, one of the also things is a lot of people are mentioning how our senior class this year is a little bit smaller than what it usually is. It's right above 200 and that's give or take between now and graduation. And then, um, since they're having the option of like the small ceremonies, that there could be even less of the actual like big ceremony. So that was another thing of, you know, numbers, I guess. But I was like, that's way above my pay range.
Um, I'd like to maximize as many tickets as we can and that's a great, I mean, eh, eh, to, to allow as many people as we can. We're, we're gonna make that effort. It's a little bit easier the closer you get, the restrictions.
Right. Deadline or either you're gonna get graduation or you're not. And if you're not, then we need to know because we can give more tickets out.
I did see on news right before coming that the governor is expected to lift all restrictions.
June one.
June one. Oh, God.
Right after graduation.
Except for the mask restriction. I guess we'll wear those.
Forever.
But what the mask restriction was with still some limitations. It was, they made mention of lifting the mask restriction in North Carolina with the exception of some indoor facilities where you have mass gatherings like crowds and arenas and things like that. So it did make mention of lifting the mask mandate.
In some places.
Uh huh.
Well, you know, last year when we had the graduation, you know, we read those executive orders and it was. Educate, you know, this does not apply to educational institutions. So I wonder if we could possibly, you know, see if that's still the case. Target for the group gatherings.
Prior to walk, prior to coming in here, I just opened an email from, from our attorneys regarding graduation.
Oh, boy.
Prom, all the reminders of what we can and can't do. So I refixed my face and came in. Um, and, uh, well, there's time in between. We're gonna do everything we can to make sure we all have a good.
I'm just happy we're, we're having one. That's the good part.
That is.
And like with your grandparents, you, those are, there's exceptions that I can understand. There, there are those ones. You have someone traveling 500 miles. I'd love to get them into the event.
And of course, I'm sorry, we'll have that live stream as well again, right?
Absolutely. We met on that today as a matter of fact, didn't we, Mr. Wellover?
Yeah.
And last year we had some, you know, that we had our deputies bringing us in cars in all directions. And some were, they were looking for our tickets. If you didn't have tickets, you could not go past a certain point. But then at some point, they did start letting people go and they stood outside the fence. So, I mean, some people didn't come because they, they didn't think they could stand outside the fence. So we need to clarify that because that is better than not coming at all.
Right. We are still supposed to make them six foot social distance when they stand along. I mean, it just, it adds another layer. Somebody has to be responsible for what that looks like.
We, we all have a bit of COVID fatigue. I mean, and when you go to, we were at the football game and there definitely, you know, we applied some common sense practice as well. Know where you're at or outside and so on and so forth. So we'll, we'll advertise as much as we can. We'll try to get as many people in. We keep hoping that there are, the restrictions ease. We still have, it's April 21st event.
Month.
So we still have over a month and we see how things change.
And you know, the governor's office might be thinking June 1st, most graduations are after that.
Yeah.
But I'm surprised.
Well, they would be.
But college is, so.
Well, college is in May, early May. That's right.
So I'm surprised he's not gonna try to do something before.
One other question was, cause like obviously previous graduations, if it was outside, there'd be like a certain number of tickets for a lawn. Is that happening or is, okay. Just asking.
All right.
And I'm assuming that you still on the deal of if it rains, we're gonna be inside.
No.
No.
You can't move that, you would only be able to have the graduates in the gym and that is it. Nobody else could come in.
All right.
So, so we have to plan.
So we have to have a plan.
We have to plan for outdoor. And so it would be rain day Friday.
Yeah.
Rain day Saturday, rain day Sunday until we could get the graduation done.
Chairs are gonna sit where they sit.
We have reserved everything through the weekend in hopes that, gosh forbid, it's COVID here. I mean, I, we plan for every worst case scenario.
It's like, oh, we got a fall weekend except Memorial Day weekend.
It is.
I know. They, and that's why they're having it on Thursday because, you know, trying to, hoping the weather's good and.
And of course, J D Naps is on the 21st, but they're inside and we cannot get around the restrictions. That is, that, those are written much tighter and not nearly as vague as, and that's gonna be the Friday, I believe that's the 21st.
Is, and that's. And how many guests are this J D Naps students allowed?
Two. And I have not put that out yet because again, I was hoping that when the announcement's made at the end of April, um, that the indoor number for COA, their auditorium will change. Right now it's 250 total.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Well, sure, yes, please.
Um, so I know the board had asked us if we can show the calendars to the teachers and students within our school and I've been doing that. And one of the things that, um, I wanted to ask about is the Fridays. I know some of them, we cut them down. Why is that happening? I just wanted to clarify on that.
On the Fridays.
Yes, the happy Fridays.
Two, two fault. One, we've been out of school for, we have not been in school consistently for a year.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's one of the reasons. And the second one was that we wanted to make sure that we offered, uh, elementary and middle school that same opportunity and we thought that was the best route to go to, to open this up across the district.
Okay. I was just making sure because I know some of our teachers, they really enjoy that time to plan for the upcoming week. It's also a nice mental health break for them, I think. Um, so that was just a question that I had come up and I wanted to make sure I asked that.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Is there no more questions? I would like to close the workshop session. Thank you.